...input of other stakeholders in the community is absolutely crucial in this process. Basically, what we're going to be doing with this input is we're going to be fashioning and forging an agreement that is going to be tailored to the strengths of our community and also addressing, obviously, the weaknesses that have been identified. So this is the roadmap that we have. Currently, we are working on the agreement. Where we're going on the roadmap is we want to get to that agreement, and once we believe that we have the input from the community and we have it forged in a way that is right, we are then going to seek recognition by the court to have a court-enforceable agreement of what's referred to usually as a consent decree. So your input is crucial. Luis, when he starts talking to you, he's going to talk about the process tonight. And just to let you know, we already want to give people enough time to speak, so there's already been people that have been taken into the room next door who are already giving input. But this input is crucial in forging this agreement. At the end, when we ask the court to recognize it, it's going to be an agreement that's transparent, that the police should know exactly what's expected of them, that the community should know exactly what the agreement holds, and that it has integrity. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Luis.
Thanks, Damon. My name is Luis Celso. I'm an acting deputy chief in the Civil Rights Division. I work in the special litigation section, and our work is to conduct investigations and remedy patterns or practices of misconduct by police. We've done this all over the country. The statute that we're enforcing came about as a result of the Rodney King incident back in the 90s in Los Angeles. The idea was that you could hold those individual officers accountable for that incident, but was that incident going to repeat itself because of poor supervision, poor training, poor recruitment and hiring? And the answer was yes. And so Congress gave the Department of Justice a tool that allows us to investigate a police department. We go in and look at it from top to bottom. We try and identify systemic problems within the police department, and we're given the authority to file a civil lawsuit against the jurisdiction, not against individual officers, but against the entire jurisdiction to remedy those problems. Now, two weeks ago, the U.S. Attorney and the acting Assistant Attorney General for the Civil Rights Division announced the findings of our investigation. We found that there was a pattern of practice of use of excessive force that included deadly force and less lethal force, like tasers. We're now, as the U.S. Attorney said, in the solution phase. We've identified the problem. We've found that it was systemic. We've found that it violates the statute that Congress passed that makes it unlawful for police departments to engage in a pattern of practice of misconduct. So now, what do we do? Well, the statute allows us to file a civil lawsuit, the way that any other individual who's been wronged by police or any other individual can file us a lawsuit. Now, the next step that we have is to sit down with the city and negotiate an agreement. Why are we doing that? Why are we not just filing a complaint and taking the city to court? Well, litigating a pattern of practice case is going to take years. It's a complex case. We need to be able to prove not individual instances of misconduct, but a law. So the quickest way to get to a remedy, especially when we have a city that's willing to cooperate and has cooperated, when we have members of the community who've been tremendously involved in offering solutions and their experiences with the police department, the best thing we could do is go right to a remedy. And that's why we want to sit down, negotiate with the city, negotiate a settlement agreement that's a voluntary agreement. But before we finalize anything, we want to hear from you, because you're the consumers of police services in this city. And it's important that your voices be also heard as part of this agreement. The Department of Justice will oversee this agreement along with the federal court. Once it's approved and it's filed with the court, the court would have to approve it. There would be an independent monitor that would oversee the reforms and ensure that the police department is implementing each of the measures in a transparent way so that you all know the progress that's being made. Now, that's critical, because part of our goal here is to restore trust, restore trust in the police department. There are many good, hardworking men and women that work for you every day, that put on their badge and want to keep you safe and keep us safe. We need to restore trust, your trust in your police department. We also need to give them the skills and the tools that they need to be successful. So we want to make sure we set them up for success. The Department of Justice will, as our, the U.S. Attorney and Ms. Joshua Samuel said a couple of weeks ago, we're here until the agreement is implemented. It could take years, but it will depend on the pace of implementation. It's important that when we leave, we leave a department that is serving you better, that you can trust it, that you can tell the difference in the daily interactions that you have with the police department. It's not just about better policies or better training. It's about the interaction that you have, that you have when you get stopped by the police. You want to have the trust that you're going to be treated fairly and that you're not going to be treated, mistreated by the police department. So we want to leave behind systems, better training, better supervision, better oversight, stronger accountability by the police department. We want to leave that before intact and in place built when we leave. We've done this across the country, and we are currently monitoring agreements in the Virgin Islands, in Puerto Rico. We have consent decree in New Orleans. Our work is about systemic reform, and your voice is important to that. I want to emphasize again, the men and women of the police department are working hard. We did find problems. We need to go back and look at specific incidents to identify whether there was a pattern or practice of misconduct. But now, we want to go forward. And now, the focus is on solutions. The way we thought we'd maximize your input is to set up small focus groups next door where you can offer your suggestions, your thoughts, your ideas. The team that worked the investigation up, that sat through reviewing thousands of pages, riding with police officers, interviewing commanders, they're next door. You have a chance to sit with them in groups. Hopefully, some of you have gotten numbers. We'll be calling people by numbers, and in fact, those interviews have already started. So what we ask is that you take the time, share your thoughts, share your feedback. We know that not everyone is going to agree with our findings. What we want to focus on now is solutions and going forward. And so the forum we created is small focus groups next door. We're going to do this again tomorrow and Wednesday. The U.S. Attorney and I will stick around here with you while you're waiting. We'll talk with you. I know some of you have questions and are uncertain about what the next steps are. So if we haven't answered those questions, those sort of immediate questions, we'll hang out here and chat. In the meantime, your input will have the greatest impact, speaking directly with the team, because they're going to be negotiating an agreement with the city. And what we've done here is we've written our toll-free number. If you decide that you don't want to sit next door and you want to reach out to the DOJ team, you can do so by calling toll-free. The number is on the board, 855-544-5134. We also have an email address that is monitored by the team. If you wanted to do a phone interview, if you don't have time, stick around today. This is just one way of getting your input. So have folks talk in numbers at the door? If not, there are numbers that are being set up. I'm going to let folks know that we're ready to take the next group next door. We're going to hang out here and chat with you all. I know that you all want to talk, but we want to make sure that the input really gets to the team. We'll hang out here with you while you're waiting to be called into the next group. So thank you very much. Elizabeth, can we check and see what group they're on?
Are there specific topics for these groups?
They're focus groups. Yes, they're focused, and they're built around trying to find solutions. So it's your sense...
We'll take it.
Well, exactly. We've identified eight areas in our letter where we want to provide some remedies. If you all think there should be nine, 10, you know, let us know. We're all ears, and we're next door for that. We'll hang out with you a little, this evening, here in this room, while folks get called next door. So thank you very much. We're going to call people by numbers, and we're just going to hang out here. So we're done.
What's going to be this tomorrow and Wednesday?
Yes. Same time tomorrow, 5:00, 7:00 tomorrow, and Wednesday. There are numbers at the desk up front. Okay, so we're just going to hang out here. Feel free to come up and ask us a question.
Are we not going to be able to ask questions and listen to the rest of the people here? When you say you're hanging out, what does that mean?
We're here to listen and talk to you while the numbers, while folks are being called to the next group.
As a group? So they can hear their opinion now if they choose.
Yeah. Make sure you get a number, because that's the input that you're hanging out with. The numbers are outside.
Excuse me. So I'm just confused, because last summer, this process happened, and we did not have a specific, because people like me who have white privilege and don't have racial profiling, economic profiling, these kinds of things going on in relation to our police, we may not have a specific incident to report to you, and that left us completely out of the process. Meanwhile, we are here in the community having serious concerns about kinds of things. And when you say, "We're not looking back, we're looking forward," I want to know if that's the sort of Barack Obama, "We're not looking back at criminal activities that happened before now, we're just looking forward to solutions." So I'm concerned about that, and I'd like to hear what you have to say. And then, I'd like to hear, how are we in groups? Are we yet numbers? Are we going in groups only with numbers? Or how is this process working? Thank you.
You can grab a number up front. And next door is part of the team, and that's where you can do the feedback. There are types of feedback you want.
But we're not doing it as a community?
No, we're doing it as a group.
Is there any community that is going to participate in this, or are we just participating as individuals?
Well, it won't be you as an individual. I'm not sure how big the groups are. It'll probably be 10, 15. So it's going to be groups of five, speaking next door to the DOJ team.
Where's the number? So if we wanted to be in a group of five, we're going to get a number?
That's correct.
Okay.
And when we held these meetings during the investigation phase, we were collecting facts to determine whether there was a violation of the statute that we're enforcing. And so here, we want to be as broad as possible and listen to your ideas. And so the agreement should reflect the community at large. So there are numbers up front.
Yes, the monitor.
Go ahead.
Well, the monitor, at this point, there's, that would be part of the agreement. So, for example, Mr. Celso, by working through, around the country, he's worked on a number of consent decrees, and we're aware of individuals who had that experience, but at this point, the monitor is not the judge.
I didn't understand that, but who's got the point? If you come up with a list of three or four people, maybe APD come up with a list of people who have all negotiated, where's the point?
Can you hear it?
Wilson?
Do we read the question?
Sure. The question is about the monitor. Who picks the monitor? Does the APD have input or not? And the community. So that's the question. What we're trying to do with this process is allow you to give input at this point. Let me just be clear, the monitor has not been picked. There has not been individuals selected at this point. So in going next door, I would ask if that'd be part of input that you give. All right? Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Actually, Luis?
Yes. Oh, yes. Let me introduce Scott Greenwood, who's here. Scott Greenwood is going to be, is representing the city in negotiations. He's here in the back, if you'd like to chat with him also while we're waiting. Wave your hand to Scott, so he's here as well.
I was over there. Get the gun to the door. I should, my thought was...
Hello, everybody. Hello, hello, hello. Hello. Please don't leave this room right now. Please, please. Mr. Martinez, a lot of people here are saying they've misinformed us. Please, please don't leave the room, okay? You haven't been misinformed. Let me tell you what's happening, okay? DOJ is trying to lead, I'm leading with them too. I appreciate every single one of you taking the time to be here. Don't leave. They have to figure out, how do they get each and every one of you to express what you need, what we need to see for improvements in Albuquerque? Okay? We know it's all about Albuquerque. We know it starts at the top, it goes all the way to the bottom. How do we deal with it all? We're a poor city. Walking out isn't going to get us there. Trying to process that, move it forward here. They afforded us two locations. One where people who have actual complaints can actually talk to an investigator right now. Then they gave us this community forum for everybody else who maybe hasn't had a bad issue or concerns. I really encourage you, don't walk out. You haven't been misinformed. Let us start with your role in here, and you'll see that.
Well, as a community, we cannot stop trying to speak out with each other and discuss it amongst ourselves. We don't want to leave. We don't want someone in front of the room to let go of the...
Exactly. That's how you come together as a community.
Right. That's what we're trying to do. So I work with you in the community. I work with a lot of you. Let's see how we can have this happen and then not be chaos. Because they need us to help them too.
And let me just announce that I have numbers. If you want to go next door and speak to somebody, please, I have the numbers.
Question. When are we first going to get to see preliminary agreements, the things that y'all, the DOJ is asking for on our behalf? I mean, when is that going to be available, and where can we see it before the agreement happens? That's a...
It's going to be everybody's choice.
I think we want to move quickly on trying to get to an agreement. I'll write the web address of the Civil Rights Division, where you can see agreements that we've reached with other jurisdictions. So you can see at the type of remedies we've obtained in New Orleans, in Seattle, in Portland. You'll get a sense of sort of what we're looking for in terms of policy changes, training requirements, supervision.
But they're just going to cut the pace to the resources, or something like that.
This is your opportunity to make this Albuquerque an Albuquerque agreement.
Something that I believe is important is in that stake value we should, for the community, to bring into the...
Did you check on your word?
I did. But I'm going to give her a quote again. And again.
Give me my time.
About the consent decree, folks. Why are the years of consent decree? If under the article of the Constitution, there are open services, enough consent decree to fire me for doing illegalities, not being loyal, not doing a good job, that's supposed to... Ms. Lopez just ran out there earlier. She didn't want to hear the rest of the story.
Well, they're cops, that's why. Major, just into us.
You're only given a couple of minutes to say what you need to say.
I was called a terrorist on live national TV on Channel 4.
Yeah, wow.
My family had been shot on the West Side. The Journal reported this. She was an informant. She put herself in that predicament. Sad state of affairs. Another lady was shot, same gun. Another man was shot, arson investigator, same gun, after being interrogated by the police department. So obviously, the cops killed the other two women for the assault. And then, I told the arson investigator, "You can take the blame." And a lot of people in here have lost their families. I've lost my life. I became homeless, and I can't even live here. She didn't want to hear this story. I was born here. I went to get a birth certificate, and the lady of the office said, "I'm sorry, I've been here six times." She chased me off. That caused me to call her supervisor in Santa Fe and said, "What do I have to do to get my birth certificate? Keep myself in the foot?" Governor sent a police officer to my house, arrested me on UNAM campus. Then I was called a terrorist by Channel 4, Eric Conner. I could tell the story to the city council.
The police department that was in support.
And now, I still live in Santa Fe, homeless, caused by the police department. I feel very sad that these people have lost family. I haven't lost. I've lost one man to death. You guys are like telling that these people, these are the forums over here. These ladies are just listening to stuff that's getting out.
So the purpose, respectfully, tonight is to give the community an opportunity to...
The Constitution gives us all the authority. My question is this, what do you do for the community when you have this level, this part here where the police arrest? I understand that part. Then you've got the prosecution for it, the prosecutor. Now, this distance to the prosecutor is where you destroy lives. If people inherently get their name on a list, arrest records, and they can't get the job, they can't get their lives together, and you won't just immediately come to a conclusion and say, "Hey, maybe after the arrest, we need to revert and come back to that court case." You visit immediately and drop the charges, expel the charges, because a person was found not guilty. Twelve people, others appeared. Instead of ruining someone's lives, like mine, and then I'm not welcome in my hometown to do my own computer business in the largest cities in the nation, or the largest city in my state, and survive while I'm still home.
So respectfully, tonight, the opportunity, we're trying to give the community an opportunity to speak about the crimes, to have an opportunity to talk to the DOJ personnel.
It's real disheartening to see the community hurt the way they are. I'm part of the community. I'm not even here. I'm coming back here from Santa Fe to explain this to this lady. You know, and now I finally got approval in Santa Fe, this APD, for their wrongdoing. And all they had to do, both, I walked into a police station, found it open, hit a zero, it opened for me. I walked in, I called them and said, "Hey, I got your police station open." They came and arrested me, took my papers out of my evidence bag, took it and gave it to the Channel 4, and it was all about terrorism when I was reading through UNFOP. It was really simple. They never did their duty, they never put the stolen record in. IA refused to complain against the two officers who didn't do their jobs. Very simple. And I went to court, and it cost me my life. The jury, the judge, took the district attorney in the back, and he chewed the district attorney out and said, "What are you doing?" Then they had to refile the charges, felony breaking and entering of a police station to unlawful use of public place. I called them for help. The two officers were sitting there discussing, and the lady says, "I don't want to go charge them." Okay, charge them in.
You know, we want, and those statements that you're making, so many people in this room either have felt something or they've seen something, and you don't, I don't want to see your issue discounted either, but let's see if somebody else, one other person, has the courage to stand up and say something, because that's what the DOJ's here. They want to hear from you, and you are a very important story, and I'm sure we have a million others in here.
The city council doesn't even want to fire these police officers.
But that's...
They never do, they never will.
And sure, the city oversight committee, so we're just seeing the same stories happen here with the DOJ, but you still have, I would just like to know if you're going to be able to revisit the case, and we pull these charges off of people. They're ruining people's lives with the charges that exist on them. They can't even get a job. So...
Thank you.
Let me ask one more time. Is there anyone else that wants a number to go next door? I'm going to put them at the desk if anyone else is interested.
How are we going to call?
They're coming in here, they're coming in here, and they're calling the numbers.
Great.
But sir, can you understand what this gentleman is saying, an implication for all of us? He's basically speaking for everybody. I mean, do you understand? He's basically saying, "What are you going to do? As anything can be done." That's basically what he's saying. And I see you skip back to the numbers. Tell us something.
How are folks going to know where you just said that?
This is very important, sir. Because the community input is what's enforced this agreement. And once we get an agreement that's a court-enforceable document, that is...
But when they break the agreement, is all you just said, is all they can do is sue. You're going to file a lawsuit against APD, that's going to take two years. They break the agreement, we have with them, it's called the Constitution, every single day, and they, their attitude towards us is, "Well, just sue us." I mean, the city's paying out $24 million. You're just like doing the shell game of responsibility. I mean, what are y'all going to do with the money if you sue APD?
The remedy of the law in the law that we're forcing allows us to see only a jugular remedy, so only, we can only seek order from the court, ordering the police department to change its policies and procedures. We cannot see damages. So individuals who, but individuals have the right and the ability to file lawsuits for damages. We are not authorized under the law to see damages for individuals. What we're trying to do is prevent the incident that we've identified in this letter from occurring in the future. We do that by, once the agreement is submitted to the court and it's approved, it takes on the aura, it becomes a court order, and it becomes enforceable as a court order. And so we can, the power of the court is available for tools or remedies to try and make sure that they're going to comply with that agreement. And a critical part of that is having a independent monitor that's going to be overseeing the implementation of the law.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. I think tomorrow, a lot of people would like to know is, are the APD going to be held accountable for past injustices? You know? I mean, are they just going to sweep what's already happened under the rug, and we take it from this point forward? And the people whose lost family members and who've been treated unfairly, are that's going to be just swept under the rug, or are we going to deal with that, or just this decade forward, or what?
It's not going to be swept under the rug, because the information that came to us from people who have experiences with the police department allows us to make findings that allow us to seek these reforms. Without the information that people brought to us about what happened in the police department, without that information, we could not have gone to this point. So, you know, that information is what was critical in helping us reach our findings.
Just to add on to what he was saying, is the mayor, the district attorney, and the chief of police going to be held accountable for past shootings that they said was justified? Because they've been up there lying to us for years. Now, are they going to be held accountable, and are they going to be charged? And, I mean, everybody in this room is frustrated, because we feel like, I think we feel like, we're getting sort of the shuffle here. And I hope that's not what's happening, because I'm personally surprised that the Department of Justice is even here, because I thought you guys would take a dive, you know, and whitewash this whole thing, but you didn't, and that's commendable. But what are you going to do now? Are we just going to go on, as the mayor said, and sort of forget about the past? Well, there's a lot of people, like this gentleman here, that has problems in the past. I'm sure a lot of people in this room have personal situations that deal with the police. Well, I got a personal problem with the mayor, the district attorney, and the chief of police, because the mayor is sort of like not accepting responsibility, and you folks are going to have to force him to accept responsibility, because we can all agree and sort of, you know, talk all this legal aid stuff, but something has to happen, and you folks have to make it happen, because, because it's not going to happen if you leave it up to the city, because the city has had their chances for the last years, and they haven't done anything. How many more killings is it going to take for the mayor to get off the dime, to bring in a chief of police who knows what he's doing? To pass it on to the other... (APPLAUSE). To pass it on to the officers in the field. And I'm not here to point fingers at the specific APD officers, because I know that a police officer's life goes from totally boring to life-threatening in seconds, and that's a hell of a job. But the people at the top have to not only bring people in to know what they're doing, they have to hold people accountable, and if they make mistakes in the past, they have to be held responsible. It can't all just, "Well, we'll just forget about it and move forward," because that's what I'm hearing from the mayor and this incompetent chief of police that he has now. Obviously, the chief is in over his head, and there are a lot of professional police officers and police leaders in this country, which they could have brought in instead of a crony of the mayor, which is obviously, doesn't know what he's doing. And all they do is act defensive, you know? Anytime they put a camera in front of them, they're either defensive, or they take the attitude like, "This is our system, and you're not going to make us do anything." And the people in the community, and everybody in this room, are taught... And the people in the community, and everybody in this room, are tired of hearing that, and you folks, the Department of Justice, has to force them to do something. We all just can't get along, you have to start being a son of a bitch, and kick ass, and make the mayor do something.
Especially what he's saying, there's not only issues within our police department, but throughout the whole political, not every single person, but I believe that's what he's pointing out as issues are major, is that we owe him responsibility, and while we have not held, he has come forth and taken any responsibility for the things going on under his watch.
What are you going to do with all the crimes documented in your own report? I mean, six people killed, and you said it was unjustified, it was unconstitutional, it was, I mean, you guys are working for the top law enforcement group in the United States, I mean, true general of the United States, why is there going to be some kind of prosecution that died for these people? I mean, you said right here, the community murdered, the community aggravated assaults with people, the laws against the laws, against the Constitution.
I do regret that a couple years ago, there were two officers that took my friend's life. I was trapped in my house for 14 hours, I was all over the place, there were explosives, they killed my friend, my neighbor tried so hard to get us all straight, but the place did not work, it went from getting to the street, the very neighborhood, they shot us, they stepped us around a step or two, I don't know what it's called, it's so bad now, how he cannot live in it, I think it was a mother of all, I think it was, in other words, it was a father job, because he was driving, he was not killed, he was a person and destroyed, and he was killed.
It's important that, you know, I go back to the statute that we're enforcing, the law that allows the Department of Justice to investigate police departments, came as a result of what I'm seeing, and the thought was that you can charge those individual officers with a crime, but those types of incidents were only going to happen over and over and over, because it wasn't just about four individual officers, it was about poor supervision, not being trained on how to deescalate, having access to a lot of weapons that you may not need. And so, the tools that we have at our disposal to address the problem that is in that, that documents, the problems that are documented in that letter, is to seek a court order to have the city change its policies and practices. And the reason it's forward looking is because we're looking to prevent the types of incidents that have been shared with us, and that have been documented in this letter, from happening in the future.
But the police are still killing people. I mean, we had a little young woman who had teenage offenses, I mean, she wasn't a felon, she was a student. What is the standard operating procedure when you have a vehicle that's parked on the street that's been stolen, you find identification inside that ties somebody to it, and then you hunt them down for hours, until you finally have the excuse to kill them? Did she have a gun? They say she did. We don't know these things, there's no evidence. We want to address now, I mean, it's crazy, we have children being shot by police now, I mean, young people, this woman was a kid, she didn't have an opportunity to make her life better or not have this happen. Why did they chase her down in the middle of the night for three hours? They could have gone to her job and arrested her, they could have issued a warrant, but they hunted her down. This is the kind of thing we're asking, why does this? It's outrageous.
What kind of immediate relief are we going to be right now moving forward until this is, everything's in place?
Let me make a clarification here. Can everyone hear me in the back? Sorry. The, the report that was disclosed and the eight findings that came out, this was dealing with a certain time period, starting in '09 and it went to 2013. And this is looking at the systemic issues within the police department, and the ultimate goal in looking at the remedies is trying to get to constitutional community policing. So, it's identified specific areas that need to be changed, for example, supervision, oversight, training.
Accountability.
Accountability and transparency. Those are what you guys want. So, what some folks are speaking about right now, is you're talking about a criminal map. We're not discussing that here tonight. We're talking about the system in place at APD, and that's what we're trying to address.
But each individual incident makes up the system, and how do you know it wasn't a throwaway gun? And one of the specific issues that you folks raised was that the cops weren't using the lapel cams, and lo and behold, when this girl got killed, the lapel cam didn't work. Isn't that odd? This is the frustration, and I know a lot of people have a lot of stories, but you need to hear every one of them, because this is what makes up the problem with the system, well, the non-system.
And that's why we're trying to take it in groups, so that individuals, all individuals within those groups, have a chance to speak, have a chance to talk, and say their mind. And then also, one of the things we talked about earlier, is if after today, you also want to add something, or you just don't feel comfortable speaking in this kind of forum, you can also email this address, or call this number, and give something individually if you want to. The purpose here is trying to make the process DOJ as accessible to the community as possible.
I just heard from someone who had ideas on how to store lapel data, because it's now digital, in a way that's encrypted, that's reliable, those are the types of, and he's got an engineering background, so we want to hear your ideas, that's the reason we're having this forum and the meetings next door. We've identified the problems, they're in the 47-page letter that we've issued, we know there are problems, and we heard you in the year, in the few months that it took us to get this done, we heard you, and it's documented in that letter. We now need to move to concrete solutions.
But see, none of this stuff is rocket science, but somebody needs to get off the dime and do something, because obviously, the city officials aren't going to do it. They haven't done it in years, people are still getting killed, so you folks in the Department of Justice are going to have to force them to do it. And my opinion is, the only way to force somebody to do something is get their attention with a two-by-four. You have to do that to the mayor, and whoever is the chief, and whoever is the district attorney. And I believe that the individual officers will follow along if they have good, competent leadership.
The first step to recovery is admitting you have a problem, and for four and a half years, we keep being told, there's absolutely no problem, it's okay, there's no problem. But here we have the same number of police killings as New York City in the same time period. What's New York City? 10 million people versus 500,000? There's something wrong with this picture. Even if you don't see it, and, by the way, I apologize for just venting, but I think that's part of what we need to be doing here, but you need to understand the first level of frustration that we have that, sorry, I'm frustrated, is that this keeps on going. We appreciate what you've done, but at this point, we want something done. I, we, right now, we understand your recommendations, we like your recommendations, but get it to happen, please, because while you've been talking, people have been getting shot.
Can you give us an example of a city where the DOJ's been able to turn it around successfully?
Sure, Los Angeles Police Department, after their Rampart scandal, had a big problem with use of force, problems with searches and seizures. It was mostly their narcotics unit, and there were problems in the way that officers were being recruited into that unit, they were not being supervised, they were sort of seen as the elite, and they got away with what they did. And so, what we did in Los Angeles, one of the changes that was a major sort of breakthrough was, we made supervisors accountable for checking whenever someone was arrested, making sure you asked whether someone was injured, and you checked for visible signs of injury, because you can't just rely on an officer to report that they've used force, and that it's resulted in harm.
How much did that office pay in Los Angeles? And how much did it cost?
It's a large police department, it's about 10,000 police officers, you know, part of it was the willingness of the city and the leadership of the police department to get, to get the agreement implemented. It took about eight years of DOJ oversight. After eight years, we handed the reins back to the city. What the city did was, they have a police commission, which is a civilian board, that oversees policies and discipline, they were able to hire their own office of inspector general, and they were able to take on the responsibilities of the independent monitor. So the way we were able to successfully withdraw from Los Angeles and leave it better than it was before, was to create systems that were sustainable. We don't want to create dependency from DOJ. DOJ cannot be here for 100 years policing the police. We need to create systems to help the police department do that, and mechanisms for you all to be involved in holding them accountable. So, LAPD is one. Another example is the New Jersey State Police, where they were stopping people in the turnpike for the color of their skin. We obtained a consent decree there. What the state did to impact not just the New Jersey State Police, but all police departments in the state, was they codified in terms of the agreement, they made the consent decree a law in the state, and that's how they were able to hold all law enforcement, all law enforcement agencies in that state accountable for racial profiling. So that's one department that, a second department is going to be.
So did DOJ take over the Los Angeles Police Department, the New Jersey Police, or did they just go within Athens?
There's no takeover in the sense that, you know, DOJ is going to be patrolling the streets, right?
Why do you think that was happening in Seattle?
No, what we're looking for is accountability with a federal court actively overseeing the reform. And those reforms need to be implemented in a transparent way, so that you all know what's happening. And as I, you know, I started this presentation earlier, the way, sort of the true test of knowing whether the agreement is working, is not whether they have new policies or new training programs, it's the way you're treated in the street. When you're stopped by that police officer, you feel like you're in danger, should you fear for your safety? We want to get to a place where those interactions speak volumes. An independent study group came in from Harvard School of Government, they did a study, and they did a survey, after the consent decree, they found that there was some disparity among racial groups, but generally, people felt better about the police department, they felt safer. They were able to reform without de-policing, in other words, they didn't just stop handling crime, they continued to fight crime, but they did it in a way that respected the rights of the individuals living.
We need to get a police oversight organization with some teeth, not with politics involved, or the mayor or the chief of police appoints half of them, we need some independent, free-thinking, outspoken people, men and women and minorities on this board, that are going to come down on the chief and on the mayor.
This gentleman is having a hard time trying to get heard as well. I recommend that those of us who expect, spoke long time, give everybody else an opportunity to also speak. There's a lot of us, and everything's important, can we work like that?
The thing is, that it seems like the DOJ is talking with a fox, who's taking care of chicken coop, and he happens to be the mayor of Albuquerque. We've been marching for a while, we've been going to every council meeting, we've gone to his office and red hagged. Then at the end of the day, he says, I didn't know that was going on. Who's running the city? Who are the cops under? Who's the chief one? So we all keep on throwing it at all the things that are happening with the police and all that. We got to remember who the heck ran this city, and it was okay for him to say, there are no problem that a few boys died, until this guy at the base of the mountain gets killed, then I'll send it to uproar, and you know who's going to fit it? The same fox that started it.
I think there was an expectation, I think there was an, I think the people were led to believe that tonight was a forum where the leadership of the city would be here to help resolve some of these problems, and I think that's, I think that's why most people were here.
Well, let me be fair to this.
It's not just them. I used to be the sheriff of Burnley County, so what I'm speaking at is that there was supposed to be interaction with all the stakeholders, with all the people that were supposed to involve, coming up with problem solving to get this thing helped resolve. And I know there's, they're speaking to them individually, but I think these people were led to believe that there is going to be a forum where they're going to be able to interact with the leadership.
See, you never advertised this meeting as a meeting with the city leadership.
But that's why the communication needs to be better. The communication, when you're communicating to the media, has to be better. People have to know what's the expectation when they're coming to these meetings, so you don't have this kind of dallot going on.
I announced at one point, I don't know if you were here, that one of the representatives of the city is here, sounds like someone else, there's other folks here. I mean, you're free to talk to folks that are in the room.
No, I understand that, but it needs to be communicated better to the media, how these forums are going to take place, and how they're going to be monitored, who's going to be the media.
They're not going to be joined.
You're channeling us over there, you're channeling us out.
I went over there, got, I went in, checked in, got my number, went over there. I rushed back to the back table, the lady back there was so interested, was too much interested, the cut in her eyes, would be to the door, be to the door, to listen to one word we had to say. I called it to her attention, I said, you want solutions, first one will be listen to what I have to say to, well, sir, we have to hurry things along, we've got a lot of people who want to speak. That's no solution to anything.
I think people here need to know that there are members here, the city council, where are you?
Albuquerque.
City council, Penya, state representative?
Senator Michael Padilla.
State senator, here we are, you're voted, the folks you voted to office are here, so you're not underrepresented. Ms. Penya, congratulations, right into the final.
Okay, this is a process comment. I just came from the room next door, most of the tables are empty. If you have suggestions and solutions in mind, and you want to be heard, my experience of sitting over there at a table was two people listened to every word we said and wrote down everything we said. Representatives of DOJ, so if you're in here and you're feeling like you want your suggestions heard, I just came from next door, and those tables are mostly empty.
They're taking good notes over there, folks.
That was the purpose of this meeting, correct? Just to give our input? You are not going to give us any solutions at this point, just to give input, and you're going to take your time with that.
The team that spent all, you know, the months reviewing records, reviewing incidents, are all next door, and they're the ones that are taking your input.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Senator Michael Padilla, I came tonight simply to listen, I don't have any control over what happens at the city of Albuquerque, I came to listen. One thing I would ask of you, though, is, it was incredibly difficult for me to even get here by 5:30, so I was kind of sneaking in the back of the room, you might have noticed. You know, this is a working-class neighborhood, I come from this area, my family's working class, and it's very difficult for people to get to a meeting at 5 o'clock. So, I mean, you can see that there's a great interest in this topic, we absolutely want to work with you, we want to help, but can you please be a little more cognizant and recognize, you know, who you're going to be meeting with? I think you'd have 400 or 500 people here if you didn't have a meeting at 5 o'clock, people work until 5 o'clock. So if we could be a little more sensitive to that, I would really appreciate that. And then, I also felt like, I felt like maybe there was, sure.
You're not going to be doing a presentation on an open mic. What we wanted to do was get people to meet next door in small focus groups to provide their input. And so, that was going to happen on a rolling basis as people came in. And I also say. From 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
If you could please communicate a little better with the mayor's office, because I called there to find out when this meeting started, and nobody seemed to know.
We didn't set this meeting up with the city.
But if you could, a lot of people are going to, that's just human nature, they're going to call the mayor's office, call, you know, free and wide, call someone, find out. So if you could.
Why would you? Why would you do this?
The purpose of tonight's meeting was to allow the community to give feedback. And again, I can't.
You want the hot seat, would it be nice to have them standing up there?
Well, I can't stress enough, I mean, you have so many stakeholders in this process, that it is crucial for the community to give feedback. And I realize that there's some frustrations tonight, I think most people are expecting just an open forum just to talk, but it's important for us. for us to try to target and understand what people's feelings are. And let me put this in context. In the report that came out, there were eight, there were eight areas where there were recommendations. We're trying to understand, obviously, what the concerns are, but also if there's any recommendations that can help us get to the criteria that eventually will be in this agreement. This agreement has to be something that's workable so that when our police officers are working towards this threshold, what they have to do, what they have to meet, they understand it. But also, it's important, and I realize I'm repeating myself at this point, it's important for the community, the community to understand what this agreement is and why it's going to get us there to constitutional community policing.
It would've been nice to have these recorded on paper from the other, you got it.
Well, sir, you can go to the U.S. Attorney's website.
I've read the report.
Well, that's where I'm going. You can, you can go to the report, anyone can pull it down, you can read the 46 pages, and in the last several pages, it gives you the eight areas of recommendation. And that's the framework in which we're trying to work and trying to come to solutions. Because one of the things that Mr. Salsito was talking about, when he was asked that question about, where he answered about LA, is we want to get to a point where we understand what the APD has to do, but we also want to, as a community, make sure that APD accomplishes, you know, that criteria.
I think everybody here should appreciate the process. I think a lot of the anger here is that they're wondering how many more people are going to get killed like that 19-year-old.
Can you speak up, sir?
I'm just, I think a lot of people in this room, the anger is because they're wondering how many are going to get killed like that 19-year-old while all of this process goes through. That, from the face of it, that was so inexcusable, we've got a police chief who sits up there and says, "Beats the hell out of me every question." It's astonishing.
This process is going to take five or 10 years. There could be a lot more innocent people that are going to get killed if there isn't action. My recommendation would be that along with the DOJ, invite the administration to come in so that they can be heard by the community. I think that's one of the biggest things that I think we want, is to be heard. Along with the DOJ, have the mayor's office.
You're, you're being put on the hot seat. You don't run the city. The mayor and his gang run the city, they need to be here and be put on the hot seat and explain to us why they've been running the city into the ground. It's not your fault.
The mayor didn't even come to the city council meeting. He had an excuse that was, as a history journalist, you know, journalist said, you know, it was a good excuse but bad public relations movement. And to be honest, you know, I don't think I'm alone in feeling that his response to this publicly, his statements have been rather tepid. And, you know, I'm going to go ahead and, you know, I said next door that I feel that's the biggest important piece of this, that the DOJ brings to this, is the ability to apply pressure to City Hall. Because our civic leaders is where I lay the blame. Because we have a culture within the police department, as the DOJ's report has stated, that indoctrinates our new cadets into a culture of fear, where they see it as them versus the public, that they're fighting for their lives every moment they're on the job. So, of course, they don't know or care about constitutional or community policing. And as long as we continue to have a city hall that stonewalls the public, or that teaches the public in this city the lesson that if they want to be heard and taken seriously, they have to take to the streets and use graffiti and stop traffic on I-25, we're going to continue to have a problem. So, I want to ask the DOJ to make sure that City Hall feels it, that they take it seriously, that the mayor's office is no longer solely in charge of appointing the chief of police, that perhaps that's a city council decision from now on. I'm not sure what the right answer is, but there's too much secrecy and too much denial from City Hall and too much lack of leadership to fix these problems in APD without them feeling a reason to change their attitudes there.
We wanted to get as much information as we could when we sat down with the city. When Mr. Greenwood, who's here in the back, told us he wanted to participate, we said, "Of course." There, I think there are opportunities for us to come out and do joint events. I think for now, it was important for us to follow up from two weeks ago when we issued the report to let you all know what the next steps were. And so, we're trying to be as transparent as possible in sharing with you what will come next. What we're authorized to do is to file a lawsuit against the city, to seek reforms, to make the reforms not just lip service or a contract with someone, but a court order that they're going to be accountable to the federal court, where there will be an independent monitor overseeing the implementation of those reforms for the long term, right? So, we don't leave until those reforms are implemented and there's greater confidence in the community about the police department.
So, what do I do if the cop beat me up? Just let it go into the rug, or who do I complain to about that? I mean, I'm a female, I'm for a guy to rough me up like that, an officer, you know? He could have dealt with it in other ways, I'm a female, you know? Like, for a guy to slam me all over and bruise me up. So, who do I talk to? I'm facing felony charges, I got booked with two misdemeanors, and I left jail with a felony charge. Who do I talk to?
You know, I know that there's a lot of mistrust out there of the police department, lenders, and we're, we're working towards getting a consent decree in place where we'll have an independent monitor. You should file a complaint. The difference now is that someone outside of APD that is going to be answering to the court, to the parties in the community, will be able to audit, make sure that those complaints are actually being reviewed, and that there's standards in the way that they're being investigated.
Yeah, because I have my roots in my roots and everything else, but...
And, and the hope is, and what we expect to see from this consent decree is not waiting for a civilian to have to complain that they were beaten, but that officers have clear guidance on when they report. Anytime they use force, they should report it to a supervisor. You shouldn't wait for someone to have to come forward and say, "It was a firearm, they broke my, knocked his tooth out." That should be routine, "We found problems with their policy and the way that they define force." How are you, how are you going to hold your officers accountable to report force if you're not defining what that means? And so, we need to fix those things because, not just for your case, but for other people that are going to be having interactions with the police department.
So, did you just say, Scott? It sounded like you're talking about something specific. If I may ask, did you report next door?
No.
Well, I keep, I mean, I can only advise that I would ask you to report next door. Also, with your incident, if you would mind talking after this?
Okay, so let me introduce Scott Greenwood. Scott has been introduced to us as the city's attorney, who's been staying with us for negotiations. So, he's great to be here, he's listened to some of the comments in the back, allowing him to come in here and answer some of your questions, so I appreciate it, Louise. Share.
My name is Scott Greenwood. I am special counsel to the city for all matters related to this investigation, findings, and the creation of a world-class agreement that will make policing in Albuquerque both fully constitutional and effective. I am not a traditional police defense lawyer, I am a plaintiff's civil rights lawyer. I crafted the agreement in Cincinnati on behalf of the community, working hand-in-hand with the Department of Justice so that we can make that police department, which had excessive force problems running to the core, use of deadly force over a period of years, disrespect for the community, we fixed that problem in Cincinnati. And we fixed that problem by the community working, there are people like me, and with the Department of Justice. So, you have my pledge to craft an agreement with my counterparts and colleagues in the room that fixes the problems. It will fix the problems, I would not be here otherwise. It is possible to do it, it's happened in Los Angeles, it's happened in Cincinnati, it happened in New Jersey, and it will happen in Albuquerque. But it won't happen if people don't share your stories, either with the DOJ investigators and attorneys, or with people that my side will be sending out and organizing meetings like this and joint meetings as well. We are committed to reforms. You're going to see some reforms announced by the city in very short order that we hope, on my recommendation, will set the tone. This is going to be a different system than it was before.
We're in relationship to Eric.
I'm sorry.
We're in relationship to Eric, Rob Eric.
In relationship to him. I don't, I report, the city is my client. The city, not an individual office holder, not the chief of police.
The city council, or meaning the mayor, the city administration.
The city.
Meaning administration.
The appointing authority, which would be the mayor and the CAO. My job is to negotiate on behalf of the community, not the police department. I want to make that perfectly clear. I'm the wrong guy, if you expect a whitewash. I'm the wrong guy to hire because I've done this the right way before. I know what is in the findings letter, I know where it came from, I know why it was issued, and I know what it will take to fix it.
So, is there going to be any immediate action that's going to make ways, like...
There will be immediate change.
The officers to turn on the lapel camera?
Yeah.
No matter what? That's not the intention.
I want to ask a question, because this is something, I do a lot of work around this issue of on-body recording systems. Would it make any difference, in the opinion of the people in this room, if you had mandated use of the lapel cameras every time an officer talked to you? Would that make a difference? And should there be a penalty if a officer... Make sure that they do it.
That's already required. But they don't do it, then what?
You mean the fact that that footage too, in a timely manner, it's not cut and pasted like they put out with Alfred Redwine and what I saw in the news. I mean...